Diamond Regional School Committee meeting for October 13, 2022. A local.
Mr. Jennings?
Yeah.
Mr. DiBiase?
Here.
Mr. Deegan?
Here.
Ms. Menard? Father Jay?
Here.
Dr. Nara?
Yes.
In the club. They call us to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. Now, any member of the public may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting. The number of the public who wishes to record the meeting must first notify the chair and must comply with the reasonable requirements regarding audio or video equipment established by the chair as not in the favor of the meeting. Other Mr. Mallow, does anybody know this recording? Okay, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible,天地一體,宇宙一體.
Need approval for the September 15, 2022 minutes. Do you second?
Second.
All in favor? I oppose.
Student report. So we do have two student representatives for the school committee this year, Dakota Valente and Ryan Nadeau. Because we're off campus today and their schedules, it didn't work, but I do have a report from them. The student government would like to report a strong start to the school year. varsity football had an exciting win over Case and has lost a few close games to Mayflower opponents. Boys and girls cross country have run in the state invitational meets. Both teams are three and one. Volleyball is having a great season and they're eight and three and have run several events, including a Day Pink event and a Halloween themed game. Boys soccer is having a great season, they're seven and three. Girls soccer is six and two. Our diversity club is back up and running as well as several clubs, Theater Arts, AV Club, Book Club, DECA, Skills USA. And there, our student government is currently planning the second annual powder puff game that's going to take place on November 18. Finally, elections for student government class presidents and vice presidents will happen on November 18.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? 1.5 citizen input, do we have anybody signed up?
We do not.
Point one, superintendent's 22 end of cycle that has been completed.
Yes, and the summary report is included in your packet.
Thank you. 3.1A personal.
Yes, the members of the committee inside your packet, provide information, the appointment first of Mr. Jesse Nados as an instructor for the Division of Continuing Education is hourly rate of pay. Second is an advisory committee appointment, this will need some committee action for Ms. Nicole Bernato from Business Technology. She is president of her own company, she has over 25 years of customer service, sales and marketing experience. Ms. Bernato provides virtual support to her clients across the United States. And as you see, my recommendation is there is to appoint Ms. Nicole Bernato as the Industry Business Advisory Board Member of the Business Technology Program.
In motion to approve, which may. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Thank you. And for the committee's information, we do have a resignation of an instructor, Mrs. Genesis Correa, for her last day of being a teacher at Diamond, will be effective tomorrow, October 14.
Point one, other matters, the use of the facilities. Do you have one?
You do, that the road crew club has approached Diamond and the road crew of Fall River is requesting the use of room 251 restaurant for their annual pancake breakfast coming up on Sunday, November 6th from 6:00 AM until 1:30 PM. And also, they are asking to waive the use of the facilities. The committee sees the recommendation there, which is to approve the request to use room 251 for the pancake breakfast and also to waive the use of the facility fee.
Do you have a motion to approve?
May.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. 3.1C elevator.
Happy to report to the committee that the elevators were very important, as where found to be not very functional have been repaired. And as we sit here today, all elevators inside the building are functional, they are meeting the requirements of the EEA, so we are in compliance. We also have the company that did install these caravans, they are still being called in in order to make sure that they operate in a safe manner for all students and for anybody inside the building. So right now, we are back in compliance, very happy to report that.
Are they on a, are they on a meeting schedule?
Mr. Penamides, it's worth trying to put them on to a meeting schedule. Places like other operations inside the United States, they are responding to our needs. It's tough to pin them down for exact dates, but he is pushing them on to say, look, you need to live up to what you contracted for years ago and having them on as scheduled. So he's pushing hard for this to be.
3.1D field trips out of state.
We do have some field trips that are coming up out of state. First, I'll refer to Mr. Rebelo, which is like meeting about the prom.
So our senior advisors are excited to go back to Newport, Rhode Island, the Marriott Hotel, we've done it there for many years. So they're hoping to be approved for the Marriott Hotel in Newport for our senior prom this year.
I will invite all members of the committee that if they do want to stop in and see the students back in action after being away during the COVID, please reserve some time on June 1st, if it's in your schedule, just to stop by and see what the prom is all about and start to take part in the end of year senior activities. It's quite the party.
Mr. Rebelo, what's on? What's the capacity at the Marriott? I know we were running into issues with homecoming, with making it Diamond only because White's had a lower capacity.
Sure.
Their capacity.
There weren't any capacity issues in specific to seniors, so you have about 350 seniors, they all bring a guest, you are hard about.
Yeah, because it's seniors anyway.
Homecomings, how far you go at school. You have to think about 1,400 kids all going to homecoming, and if you open it up to outside guests, then it far exceeded White's Westport limits. For senior prom, it's specific to seniors, so you're only looking at 300 students per plus month.
I do want to point out to the committee that this is in out of state because it is in Newport, Rhode Island, so will need committee action to approve the out of state travel.
Okay, our recommendation is to approve prom.
Which may.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Thank you. The second that we have is that this recommendation for field trip by the English Department to visit the Rhode Island School Design Museum on Tuesday, November 1st, from 9:00 AM until 2:00 PM. Bus transportation will be provided. There's educational material inside your packet that does brief you up on exactly what they're going to be doing here. It is, it's quite the place, if you have the sense that it is very historic and they intend to leave, it's not just a day out of school, but it's a day out of school with education purposes, they do leave it into their curriculum, their lesson. So I would ask the committee to please look at the recommendation, which is to approve the request by the English Department to take students on that educational field trip to the RISD museum on November 1st. And November 15th.
Do you have a motion to approve?
May.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
The third one is for the ski club, which is back up and in action, for them to take the students to Pat's Peak in Hennecker, New Hampshire on Saturday, January 28. It has met with rave reviews in the past, getting back into it on Saturday, so it allows participation without losing any time on we're in or school time. This is something that's provided for the students through two advisors. They are monitored along with other chaperones and the bus transportation is provided by the school. So my recommendation is to please approve the ski club trip to Pat's Peak in New Hampshire on Saturday, June 28, 2023.
In a motion to approve?
May.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the last and final one is looking ahead to 2024, is that the advisors have approached to have the International Club with a proposal that they advertise and take students to two places. One would be to London and Rome on April of 2024, and then the Galapagos in June of 2024. This is a whole year in advance in order for students to save their money, make a horrible to them. They do get discounts through the two advisors who work with the company, that office that they call it like, almost like a little bit of a grant. So if the students do some work, they get the money off their ticket. So something that has met with very good in the past, has met with excellent reception by the students, gives them the opportunity to go places that probably they won't be able to go.
Why two trips?
They have two trips because I asked that same question, and it was based on the interest of the students when they did this. This year, they are off to, and I'd be absolutely lying to you if I say I know exactly where they're going this year. Helena, can you bail me out of this one? Where are they off to this year? Is it Peru?
Peru, yes.
Peru, that's where they're going, and that was approved by the committee last year. This year, they giving it up for the historical concept of what's going on in London and Rome and how that works out. Again, there's material inside your packet towards the end of when they're calling there, and it's to study the history of Rome, everything from the gladiators to the Roman Colosseum, it's a historical symphony. For the Galapagos, it's more scientific than going over there to the Galapagos Islands. They, of course, this is all being driven by how participation is and also by the fact of how safe it is to take the students around during that time. But I asked the same question, they said that we do believe that the interest is there. I think that being in June of 2024, that's pretty far off.
Yeah, no, but my concern is, how many, how many students in the international club?
It depends upon where they're going, they average between 18 and 20 students.
So it's not just one club, it's whoever that hosts it and then people join that.
When they say the international club, they promote it through two large instructors, and they promote it as having the opportunity to go, obviously, so far in country. They then give them that opportunity to correct, they save their money, what's it going to cost, parents are involved, it involves expenses, what's going, what's going on, so the parents feel safe about it. And it's not targeted to any specific group, it's open for the whole school.
Mostly, it seems. I know, I know my children themselves would take part in these trips through tours with the International Club, and it's very well received, they had a great time.
It gets them that pretty fired up about it. So I would pride up about it.
Different places I haven't been.
Do you have a motion to approve the international club?
May.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
I thank you very much for that.
Okay, E, the school calendar. You got a change?
The school calendar changed on that second page there, you will see the two days that were scheduled to be half days, 11:58 and then 12:28. The MCAS retest was scheduled for that day, and we got that information, and as soon as we got it, we did make that change to notify everyone back in September so they have enough time. Again, just a simple switch of both of those half days to make them full days, and we worked with the union to see what they would prefer for those movements of those half days, one is professional development day for staff, so it'll be on December 7th, and then the other is at 12:28, which will happen on February 7th.
Do you have a motion to approve the change in the calendar?
May.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I oppose.
Yep, 22 and then a C delegate. Anybody?
I'm not available on that Saturday, would they need the vote? I'm not available.
What day is the vote on?
Saturday, usually the last day.
The last day?
Yeah, it is.
You can put me down as a delegate, I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to make it, but we need somebody as a voting member.
I'll remind the committee also that Friday is a very special Friday that week, that everyone's maybe ongoing, they should forward that information to Helena, who would love to be registered here and head present to that Friday night. Mr. DiBiase is going to be receiving an award on Friday.
I'm not going.
But those are friends.
Busy that Friday. If anybody is interested, let's get in touch with us.
I do need to know by October 18th, so.
All right, G, we have the fuel oil bid. Last year, we purchased our number four oil on the state contract. This year, Conmo is no longer carrying number four oil. They go on green. So they want to zoom in, zoom, that's it. So we put a bid out for number four, that both the same providers from the state contract, the lowest bid was sprayed, that is $142 per barrel. That's representation as the lowest responsible responsibility.
All right, recommendation is to, one, the fuel bid.
Is this a lot higher than last year or something?
About the same, actually. We spent $187,339 last year on fuel.
So.
How many gallons is a barrel?
Forty-two.
Did lock this into that price at 142?
Yeah, for two years.
Not one. Really?
Yeah, slow.
That's like what, almost four dollars?
Uh, yeah, about four. Just a little over four. And last year, it was on a variable rate, so I don't really have any comparison to Conmo was on variable rate.
So after one year, we have to set it out to new bid again?
Yeah, yeah. Number four has been, not very difficult to get it, but what they do is they basically use number two and number six, and they put it together, and that's it, they get the number four. The heavier denser, it's almost like a diesel. So we burn hot, we burn longer, so eventually, we don't, you know, with the new building, hopefully, we're on natural gas, because you would be burning number two, it'd be burning significantly higher from a, the water and the prices of, not much difference, so.
There'll be no one. There'll be no one, there'll be no one in the middle of school.
All right, just want to make sure. So just ask that we take a vote to approve.
Yeah. Do you have a motion to approve? Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. All right, they're up again, financial report.
Again, nothing outstanding on page three, we will have a deficit inside the extraordinary maintenance line of 4,300, it's about $15,250. For, we don't have a line in that budget yet, normally, what the district has done in the past is, once we certify our E and D, our E and D goes into the extraordinary line, and then we use that number to bring our expenditures up to net full spending and net full spending. It'll sell that, it'll fill that void.
It was easy to, to be a deficit because it started with zero.
We don't fund it until we certify our E and D, which we already submitted E and D to, to last month, so it adds, is that deal, we had a web conversation with the deal up, they don't envision us getting our certification until November or December. They put the savings first, have a free cash.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, I, expenditure approval.
This is a few, the Caliors, the capital project, which is one for supply of medical assisting. BPA 100 was for a change or alt that we did when we resurfaced the roof for the summer. After we say, you know, with the rent that we've been having, we haven't had any legal stuff that has been reported. That area was actually over Mr. Machado's area. So everything seems to be going well. Precision fitness is for athletics, it's for replacement some of the weight room equipment. And we did sell some of the equipment on auction recently. Renaissance Learning, we had this on last month. We tied into, rather than going for a one-year contract for $17,000, we extended it for a two-year contract for $31. And then we ended, changed the ending of the contract, so it ends August 31st, so it's a little timing wise, instead of, we repeated for, so I'm asking to, and you'll see it in the transfer earlier, E-track is supplies for the unit. Stills Machinery is over Perkins Grant, it's for a dowel system. Stills was actually at the school today, looking where the site where they've installed. Also, they opened some of the curriculum and professional development for staffs that pull along with it. Seems to be a very reputable company. And again, this is some of the purchases that were being put grants to offset some of the equipment purchases in the project. And then the last one is the bus for the senior prom.
Do you have a motion to approve these budgets?
May.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Jay Transfer is Mr. Kitchen.
Looking to transfer $39,332 from food service salary and Skills USA to the English Software Line to support the Renaissance, and also to $26,000 of that would be for Business Professionals of America, I did speak with Mr. Sweet. We fund Skills USA at $150,000, spent about $103 last year. Mr. Mental, who is the advisor for BPA, has done a business plan for the state and national participation, so we came up with a little over 26. He is working with Mr. Machado and with DECA and some of the fundraising they're doing there, so will have additional funds available for himself. He's taken a conservative approach on it, that would be twice already, seems to be quite on, on a task.
The skill is varying based on how many students make states and that.
It does, it does, but $50,000 is significant.
It was near 40, remember, that went down.
No, there was probably less activity, it was a little one dollar. But last year, it was a hundred and straight. Last year, we brought this up, $3,000. And again, Mr. Sweet didn't have an issue spoiling BPA.
Where's Skills at the end of this year?
Help me to Georgia. But the first year was this year in Atlanta, as a principal from St. Louis, and it's tied up for the next five years, they signed up a six-year contract.
Any questions, comments? Do you have a motion to approve the transfer?
May.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, the student activity class.
There's no, this is a dilaction of the thinking by the committee. Like I mentioned earlier this year, it's more of a balance where our accounts are. When January comes around, we will have to close out last year's class. This is a dilction of the thinking.
Any questions, comments?
Where does the money from the school store go?
It stays in the school store. It does, again, that's why it's called revolving now, basically what they're trying to do is, and I think Mr. Machado's doing a good job with it. He's one of his online stuff, so it's just buying commodities, selling commodities, buying, buying, selling commodities. I think if the, you know, if the committee, I can investigate a little further, because I don't, you don't really have a special interest, but in the facility, if we do have a physical store, we don't have a physical store.
It's all online right now?
It's all online, yeah.
All online?
Yeah. So if there is something like that, maybe some of the money can go towards a display, even if it's a display case in the, in the front or something that shows sort of the island, it might be beneficial.
I mean, I'd just see $50,000 in that.
Yeah. Don't put it corner.
What's that?
Don't put it corner.
All right, any other questions, comments? House building, subcommittee, Mr. DiBiase.
In your packet, there's the community projects. This will be updated, they have a lot of requests coming in at this time, and Maria and her staff are going over them and meeting with the various towns that are asking, so this should increase next, this month. Right now, they're finishing up several projects from last year, and several are still pending whether for whatever reason that is listed on the paper. Any questions from those? As far as the house building goes, right now, they're finishing up Mr. Sylvia's house from the garage. Plumbing's been out there, electrical's been out there, so they're pretty well done with that project, the outside's all done and painted, and the inside is cheap rocked and done. So that project be finishing, and all the permits for the addition that be doing on the People Incorporated home on Burnside Drive at Swansea are done, signed, and they're meeting, Maria and her staff are meeting next week with People Incorporated, and final steps to get that project going, hopefully, we think by the end of October, correct?
That's what Dean planned, because they want to get out there. Whether we'll be turning and what it is for this whole.
Right, so, but that's, because we have, the only other thing that was on the project on our list was we had the practice field that we had thought about a few months back, and they've already had the trees removed and had it, the design is out there for the practice field. I spoke at the meeting to the chairman, and several of the contractors have looked at that area to put additional parking, but we're going to lose about 70 to 80 spots out here in the front. So several have tied with that spot, because it's really the only spot on the property we have left to put 60 to 70 pockets, pockets bases in there for the faculty. So what my recommendation is to the committee is at this point, we hold off with the practice field until we get the CM on board, which will be next month, and let the CM, again, look at the, the area where he would like to do things, and if he needs that piece of property, and I think we're going to have to forego the practice field so he can, or she can make that comfortable parking lot for the spaces we're going to lose. Because we're not only going to lose those spaces to the faculty, but we're going to end up losing spaces for the 251, which will take spaces over near, most likely by the gymnasium, which will move more administrators of faculty to use that pocket space for the student parking lot. So, but that's something that the contractor, again, when they get home, they'll be putting a fence up from Locust Street all the way across those pocket spaces, all the way up to the end of the fence line. So that's what their plan is anyways. But we'll know more when we get the CM on board and they come up with their plan. We can talk about this.
It is ready.
Yeah, the, for the vans that we have, the school vans that are all parked out by our auto mechanics, Mr. Kitchen's going to be working on getting prices for the, if you notice by machine shop, they live above that area, so that faculty down in that area can use that area, that those spaces that they created. They're also going to be looking to, on the other side of Auto Body or machine shop, to clear up that other piece of land so we can park the vans. So Mr. Kitchen's going to get prices on the, moving the tree that's there and putting in the milling, leveling that, putting in the millings there. Other than that, if there is any questions? Say, Mr. Chairman.
All right, they're up again, MSBA report.
As we just indicated, the selection committee will be meeting again on October 28th to go over the, to go over the interviews that were set for the four contractors for November 2nd. And we'll be interviewing them, and the vote will be taken either that day or on the 7th of November. We also, the, the working group just met before this meeting, and there's several things that they're going to be, the things are going to be happening over the next month. The architect- The architects will be coming in and meeting with all the shops and all the academics to go over their, their schematic plan for their shop. So they can start putting that together, because that all has to be submitted to the MSBA by February, I believe it is, by February fifteenth, I think. There are also gonna be, as well as meeting with the administration and the physical education department. The starting on the, on, on October seventeenth next week, Geotech is gonna be in here putting in, doing some drilling, doing some geo-studies on the football field and other areas around the property. We've talked about the football field that we're still using for soccer and football. They've assured us that they, the, once they make that drill, take their sample, they've already progressed with Glenn. They'll be cleaning it up, whether we're gonna put sod down or be seated, whatever we're gonna do, it'll be there. It's not a huge hole, they're small holes. So the contractors and the architects will know what's, what they're dealing with. We've already done, I believe, thirty holes on the geological study we did a few years ago. They'll be doing approximately forty-four more holes around the property. So that'll be running from October seventeenth through November first. And, I think that's, and also they'll be doing some test bits for the stormwater runoff in the future.
Mr. DeBiazio, can I just ask one question? Hope myself and Mr. Kitchen have looked into the request of using KIA contract, because they can't get in touch with D-CAM, correct? We both thought that there had been a vote to do that, but apparently there's nothing in the minutes. So I just wanted to just say that we're gonna now reach out to colleagues based on not needing the hope, authorized that if they.
They're just, what they'd like, if you, if you can reach out, they need to get that, the contractors will all ask it to that. So even if it hasn't been approved by us, they're gonna be making some changes. Colliers, as they just indicated to us when we said, yeah, yeah, we want that, we want that. They obviously want things sticking out for liability sake. So they just need Diamond's commission to submit that form of that contract to them.
I think Mr. Kitchen and I both did agree that we're gonna send email over to them, allowing that to happen.
Okay.
Okay, but we, we just weren't sure if they had been a vote taken by the committee to use the D-CAM contract. But we couldn't find any, no track.
I don't remember, I know we talked about it at that meeting, but I don't remember a vote taken.
So we're gonna do that, ask one question.
Okay, thank you very much. And they, if you two could reach out to him sooner, better, because they're, the deadline for submitting is past. But he's gonna, he'd like to get these to him, so they can all.
One was an email tomorrow, you know, he'll get some.
Thank you very much, thank you. Other than that, Mr. Chairman? Thank you. One more thing, all of the shops have been issued schematics of their shop. So they're reviewing this now along with their teachers. So when they come around to the shop, they'll already have an idea of where they want things and what they're gonna need. And the architects, I think, they'll speed up the process. So Mr. Bentley and Andrew saw that all the shops got closed this week. And they'll be working with their staff on getting those prepared.
Did you pop those?
Please.
Did you pop those?
No, I did not. No, I did not. I did not, I was not prepared. I just had the schematic design from the original schematic, which some of that has changed.
That digital are copies?
That is soft copies of.
Have you ever, do you want one, or do you want one for me? How do you want?
I would say you get one. Thank you. Okay. You can send me one as well, Mr. Kitchen, because he can have a spare copy for you. Thank you.
This is terrible. When's this contract, that works?
I'll be, I'll, I'll just stick along just for that. That's it, Mr. Chairman?
That's it, alright, thank you. And we're gonna come back.
Yeah, we will, we will pass that one executive session, come back out and address the topic again.
K O, Assistant Superintendent, Pennsylvania, Paul Mr. Revell. Thank you, yes, the start of the year recap, the big one there is our meeting with Governor Charlie Baker. Diamond representatives traveled up to Westfield for a board presentation. Diamond actually received a large sum in the area for the Skills Capital Grant. We received two point five million dollars for our advanced manufacturing and dental assisting instructional lab space. This is with an eye on purchasing equipment that will be transferable. We just had a meeting today and we were all a little astounded by the number that's going to be there for new equipment. So as much money as we can save now by purchasing equipment that will be transferable to our new building, we're gonna aggressively target. So through the Skill, Skills Capital initiative that the governor has, we're gonna continue to put in for these grants. And I was very, very pleased to say that, you know, we're in a room full of, of all of the schools in the Commonwealth and Diamond was the number one. I think it really shows the commitment, the commitment of the governor towards Diamond specifically, you know, when we're getting new schools. So two point five million was, was a great award for us. School year roadmap there, you can kind of see what we talked about last month with our roadmap for school improvement and initiatives we're taking to build our culture back and truly be one Diamond. School community partnerships, last week we met with Lars, Laura Douglas, who's the president of Bristol Community College and Diamond representatives to discuss offshore wind and potential pathways, knowing the jobs that are coming down. Offshore wind feels almost like this elusive initiative that's out there. I remember going to New Bedford back in two thousand and eighteen to talk to Vineyard Wind. But it's finally here, we are gonna take next steps with VCC to create a pipeline and pathway for kids to get into jobs right away. They have an offshore wind certificate and they have an offshore wind associate's degree pathway as well. We're, we're exploring both avenues with them, very preliminary right now, but there is funding, there is funding for students to earn that offshore wind certificate in high school. We just need to make it work. It's very preliminary though, but we're gonna make it happen. And then the last piece is MCAS. On your table in front of you, there is a slide presentation that we showed at advisory night. And in that, I, I just wanna start with the challenges that schools have faced, specifically Diamond. You think about schools like Durfee, Somerset, Swansea, they have a hundred and eighty days to get through their curriculum and due teacher. For Diamond, we have ninety days to get through that. Throw in the academic learning loss, the disruption to learning that's happened over the past two years. We've had challenges on the academic side because of that academic learning loss. But Diamond also has vocational learning loss too. And I said this at advisory, I feel incredibly, incredibly, not nervous, but in the sense of I, I feel responsible to continue what this community has come to expect from Diamond, and that's producing life-ready kids. So what you see on that second page, how we addressed it over the past two years, the challenges that are just mentioned. We put into, we put all kinds of initiatives, number one being excellent teaching in the classrooms every day and in the shops. All the credit to the teachers to where we are, peer tutoring, virtual tutoring. We hired a math interventionist, we really utilize our SRF funds to combat the gaps that schools are facing. If you move on to the next page, you'll see an accountability rating that each school gets after the MCAS. What goes into that is several things. Achievement, how, how well kids did on the MCAS test, math, English, science. How much growth they've shown over time, chronic absenteeism, participation rates. It's all factored into this formula that produces a score for your school, one to ninety-nine. You'll see the score for, for schools in our sending communities. And above to say, the work that we've done, the work that our teachers have done and the, and the effort that our students have put in reflected in that. Is there work to do? Absolutely. And we're really combing through those scores, line by line, item by item, where can we improve? So there is a lot of improvement to happen, but very pleased with where we are, especially considering the challenges I men, mentioned. And that's only two of them. And within that report, you'll see.
Mr. Revell, for the people watching, they don't have this in front of them, can you just read all the scores?
Sure, so Diamond was fifty-five accountability rating. New Bedford vote forty, DP thirty-nine. Durfee was at six, Somerset forty-four, Case fifty-six, and Westport sixty-five. And again, I mentioned, other schools have a hundred and eighty days to work through curriculum. On our academic and our vocational side, they only have ninety days to get our kids ready and our kids there. So you think about that coupled with the disruptions over the past few years. Incredibly encouraged by where we are. I think it's, it's credit to the, the hard work of our teachers and students, as well as the strategic initiatives that we've had over the past few years that really bear fruit with this score, so I'm pleased by that.
Thank you, any questions, comments?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, one comment, I, I was here about the other night for the, and when Mr. Revell was with the advisory, teachers and the advisory committees, and very well response to it. A lot of people were raving about the scores and thanking Mr. Revell for the, for giving that information out.
And if I could just say one more piece, we think MCAS, we think academics, but this is a whole school effort to push our culture, culture, right? To get kids in school to really set our culture of, of one that it's a place of learning on the academic side and the vocational side. So we may strive, long way to go, but like I said, we have a plan to do it and some more people, I suppose.
Thank you, Jack. Okay, Superintendent Report, Mr. Bentley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just five quick bullets. Again, I want to echo some of the comments that Mr. Revell has made. And I am very impressed by the faculty and how they are stepping up to some of the challenges that we are facing. The very first one is that we've had an increase of both special education and English language learners population in Diamond. There will be a recommendation I have coming up a little later on on one of those. But it is also causing us to reflect on programmatic changes moving forward of not just serving more students, but serving more students with the attention that they need. And that is our focus. As Mr. Revell mentioned, Diamond was a recipient of the two point five million dollar capital skills grant. There is a copy of the letter that I did receive from the governor, Mr. DeBiazio, and Packer. MCAS scores have showed that we're doing very well, again, it's reported out. But we will use the scores to announce that crafty scheduling and content delivery going forward. We're already looking at next year's schedule and what courses are we offering to our students. That's already happening now. In recent developments though, in Alice Drill, which I think you're familiar with, would be the, what happens when an intruder comes into our building. It was conducted in conjunction with the Florida Police Department, in particular their SWAT team. They were observing, so the Alice Drill, Alice Drill was conducted. You do see the report from our SRO, Kevin Loes is included in your packet. He wrote down strengths, weaknesses, and recommendations. It is not a dormant piece of paper. It is something that must be constantly reviewed, enhanced, refreshed, and most of all, practiced. So that just in case that day ever occurs, which hopefully it never will, everyone in the building knows how to react. Overall, you will see that it was very good, well handled by the faculty and students. And there are some recommendations that he has given to us. But overall, it was a very good drill. Lastly, something that is very enjoyable, the Diamond Culinary Department will be partnering with the Science Department and they will offer a version of their molecular gastronomy class, which combines practical applications of science along with the theory of culinary art. This is an active school activity, which we're going to advertise for. It does span twelve weeks, two hours a class. The class size is twenty students, it's two instructors, and it's a total of forty hours, thirty instructors. And you see that, the rate of day there. There is a schedule that is inside the packet, that not only breaks down the weeks that they are doing this, and this is all active school, but also on the backside, the topics that are covered with each of the students. So it's actually a very unique program that takes the culinary arts concept with one of our chefs, along with a member of our Science Department. And they work the two together to show the students the wonder of what happens when you combine science with culinary and what delights can be achieved when they combine these two. Very exciting. And that is my report.
Great, any questions, comments? Thank you. Moving on to a Q, Q and A events. Next school committee meeting, you said, four, November the tenth? You may, you may discuss that. Yeah?
I do.
You do?
I'm, I, I'll be, I'll stay for a day or two.
Alright, we'll have to, to, um.
You two guys are gone, we're not gonna have a call.
We'll hear something else next week. We'll get something.
Send something out, see what the availability and think if that's the case, because we're not gonna have a call.
We'll definitely offer the tent.
Definitely offer the tent that day, both don't be gone.
Yeah, definitely offer the tent.
Alright, R, we got the, there is one item anticipated.
There is one item, Mr. Chairman, and it's included in your packet, and I believe that it would be on a separate piece of paper, so we can differentiate. Over here, coming on to what we've just done, we've heard the MCAS scores, we've gone through our population that's just come into our building. Where we're finding a deficit is servicing our English language learner students that are in our building. You see in a complete piece of documentation that shows where we have worked last year and where we are this year in total ELL population. Going from eighteen to thirty-one students, in grade nine alone, we've gone from six students total, and nineteen students this particular year. And each one of those students needs to have services in English language, in order to achieve success inside a program. With that in mind, there's been some meetings over the last two days. And I come out with the following recommendation. First of all, I am going to request to add a second English language learner teacher position to address the needs of the students due to an increase in this special population. And we have the tax material, and I'm asking the committee to please approve the request to advertise for and hire a second full-time ELL teacher. The salary and benefits will be prorated and the position will be funded by SRF three grant funds.
So these will be one year, this, one year.
SRF three is a two-year amended position. So it will cover students this year, and it will continue forward next year. It would be a two-year period.
Two-year contract?
During that. Well, it's a two-year funded position, I have to say that one, because the teacher may come and he or she may go have to leave after a year. But the position will still be there, because we do need this one. The committee will have a decision to make when we come forward at the end of the two-year period of June of twenty twenty-four.
It's, it's funded by the grant, but if it's a teaching position, we have to hire a man that.
It's a DTA, it's a DTA position, but the source, the source of funding.
Right, we gotta pay in pursuit to the DTA contract.
Correct.
Right, but it's only for two years, as long as a grant's there.
Yeah, so if you don't fund it, if the money's not available. You guys will have to deal with that in your budget, deliberations down the line.
Subject to appropriation.
Exactly.
And that, that's why I'm proposing that it come out of the SRF funding as the source of funding for this, and it will cover us for two years. But it also gives us a year moving forward on how to address this when we come to June of twenty twenty-four, the budget, thanks for this.
But, but no, but no one's getting hired for two years, you just.
No, 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 no. The funding is, the funding is coming from this.
No, I understand that, but they're gonna be under the contract.
They're on the contract.
Some reason someone's hired, it didn't work out.
Correct.
That, that person might keep it hired for two years. They follow, they follow the.
They follow the DTA, exactly. DTA contract, all the evaluations and so on and so on, you're absolutely.
We'll have to leave it two years, so.
Alright, okay, alright, as long as that's all, it's quite all.
You, you have an individual today that represents management for the eighteen current students, correct?
Yes, we have.
So we're plus twelve students, so it's your opinion, the twelve additional students requires additional support by hiring somebody?
Yes, because if we look specifically at the freshman class, okay, that is where the biggest need is. Right, we have increased significantly from nine, I mean, I'm sorry, a total of six.
From six to nineteen.
From five to nineteen, so that's triple the number of, of students trying to service all of these students with just one person.
So in the event that this comes to fruition, it is your opinion that by having two people there, it could suffice the needs of fifty students or forty students?
Yes.
At what point, what, what is your opinion in terms of?
Well, we have, currently in the building, we have thirty-one identified ELL students.
And that's.
Of those thirty-one, nineteen are in the freshman class. That's where we're lacking severely. We have only one ELL teacher servicing all these students. And we're finding that in certain classes, there's a large number of ELL students that are all in one class.
Such as the freshman class?
Yes, and that's what it's like, we need.
So we're anticipatory, that by bringing in an additional support.
Yes.
As the numbers increase, we'll be better prepared in the future. As the numbers in increase, we'll be better prepared in the future.
Yes, so we'll take care of this year. To moving forward, when that nineteen becomes sophomores, we will have another person already.
And that's not to say we may have an additional twenty freshmen, so now we have.
I'm basically, my person's going down. I don't either, the various students, we did receive a letter that the committee remembers from the Department of Education asking us to focus on certain populations within our improvements, how we are or are not servicing them. This is showing them, I've already received that letter in anticipation. And in anticipation of that, I asked for the members of the Diamond community, specifically the guidance area and the E L department, to please, I need, I need numbers for special education, I need numbers for E L students, what do we have, what's our ratios? And that has gone up significantly in the freshman year significantly.
And who's to say next freshman year may be more than nineteen?
Again, these are the populations that we certainly we pitch Diamond to as all populations. We encourage them to apply and certainly to be part of the Diamond community, however, we also need to meet their needs. Okay, and that is we are right now that we're falling a little short right now, that's why the second teacher.
Of those nineteen, do you know what their first language is?
Yes, the majority is Portuguese, the second is Hispanic, and we do have a young man who's Arabic, who speaks that, he speaks English, but his first language is Arabic.
So we'd be looking for someone who speaks Portuguese and Spanish.
Um, we can't exactly say that on the application that we advertise for, but it would be very good for Diamond to have someone who is bilingual.
But if they only speak French, who needs to speak one of these students' first languages?
The concept is to work with them, yes, their native language, and their current teacher is, but also to teach them the nuances of the English language and how to survive in English math, science, as well as their vocational programs. Where that as you know, vocational students have their own language when you get into certain shops. There are terminology that has to be explained to them, so we have, that's the population we're servicing right now.
So in your report, you said that the E L students and special ed have both gone up, what's? What are the numbers for special ed have gone up, do you have that?
I can't give you that off the top of my head, I cannot. I can give it to you if I had it with me, but I don't have that, I can certainly send you that information.
I can speak to the freshman class, so last year's freshman had around forty students in it, now popped up to over sixty. So the two big things that we're hearing from the state are your special education numbers and your E L numbers. Very strategic and targeted initiatives, right, for E L, what we did was we sent current E L students to sending schools with them. So students could see, I'm okay, wow, you know, I can go to that school, I can go to Diamond, where there may have been this stigma for English language students, I can't even go to that school. So we saw the increase there with with representation at our open house, and then our special education numbers too. And that's specific to the freshman class.
And I'd like to bring to the committee's attention, Mr. Kitchen, I hope I'm not putting you on the spot, but something that you were kind of initiating and I think there was some grant money for that, what you were proposing.
Yeah, the there was grant, uh, T twelve were technology grant, but can't buy hardware, so we're like, go up was. A grant to try to take the freshman class and use the videographer and then have the the teacher narrate it and then send it to the interpreter that we have. So we have a English, Portuguese, Spanish of the primary reading framework skill, skill in freshman, and then next year do some launching scene. And just attach it to a video library on their on their webpage. So if you're looking for the skillset, they can explain it.
Also, I know last year we talked about the increase of students with social, emotional, that struggles increasing as well. Do you have numbers on that for this year, is that leveled off, gone down? As far as hospitalizations, we've had, or just reports, I mean. What is the guidance counselor, were they just the counselor, were they seeing?
They're still seeing significant issues, I can speak directly to hospitalizations, we've had three so far for mental health issues, but they are still seeing a lot of, the big one this year is the anxiety, anxiety of being in school and around other people. Specific to the grade nine class.
We just, we just completed some work on a mental health grant with initiatives of how to stay almost constantly in touch with students who are feeling certain ways, and it has, it's bearing some fruit right now, but it is, it's.
So we have one full-time and then one our time.
Adjustment counselors, yes, we have a full-time adjustment counselor, we have another adjustment counselor at the E L, which we. And we're looking to hire, and this was out of S R, the transition counselor focused on grade nine kids.
When you said that we had three students that were hospitalized, that the initiation of the hospitalization occurred while they were at school or while they were at home setting?
I can speak to them specifically, I know one one happened through adjustment counselor intervention.
Okay.
And one did happen over the weekend.
But but that was a home setting in which.
We we do reach out to those students and the families and we offer all the services they may need. Perfect the pies, the, yes, receive the help that they need, but then transition back into the school setting.
And when they're out of that imminent need, they're no longer in a hospitalization situation, we have the support to provide their asset to ensure.
Everybody, yes.
I guess my point is, I know we're trying to increase help for those who are learning English, those special ed. I I think that's also a priority that if we can find a position to help that part, I'm sure.
Oh, I know, absolutely, does that mean, you know, it's kind of all encompassing is the way we like to look at it. What they used to call it in the back of the day, the whole child approach, you know, it's not just an isolated incident. It's the many isolated incidents that have been brought out by a number of factors. And we're addressing them moving forward, thank goodness for the amount of grant money that is available in order to tap into that, in order to get the resources, we need persons, person resources in order to work with the students. Thank you.
Okay, recommendation is to approve, we need a motion to approve.
Motion, Jim.
Mr. Chairman.
There is a question from Mr. Mattos on the chat, I don't know if you want me to read it or.
A question?
Yeah, with regards to the um, the E L teacher posting.
That's the posting?
Yeah.
Could you just type it out or do you wanna? I can read it from here, okay? Says can can this posting include a preference for someone who speaks a foreign language?
Probably.
Probably one in the greater Fall River area, and if you word it as that, being like that, I think is what he's getting at.
I don't, well, we're not suggesting can or can't, but can we have a job description for the person who currently works there?
Yes.
So what does that say?
It does not specifically say that about a specific language, because your license in English language learner, that's a very specific license, which means that they are qualified to work with English language learners.
If you already have a job description, I think it's what we have to use.
Sure.
We have to negotiate it, change it in the job description, although it's the school community's function, I don't know whether we'd be allowed to negotiate.
Uh, Mr. Mattos, is he here?
Yes, thank you.
He did.
He did, all right. Okay, uh, do we have a motion to approve? That be the second, all in favor?
All right.
I propose. Thank you very much. Okay. All right, um, any correspondence, we have the Skills Capital Grant board, which are.
That's already pending, how did they find?
And right now, our next meeting is scheduled for November tenth, which will be changed this coming week, we should be able to come up with something. And brief point four, executive session.
We do have a need to executive session, so it's a general law student, section twenty-one, paragraph three. We conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-meaning personnel to conduct, to conduct collective bargaining sessions for contract negotiations with non-meaning personnel. Now, we keep individuals contracted, contracted with E L P N director and assistants of the president slash principal. We also have a need to go into the technical session for similar conditions, general laws, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, and paragraph three. And as a discussion, we respect the collective bargaining litigation, no committee may be detrimental, have a detrimental effect on the bargaining, litigation position. Without the bargaining, the chair sort of clears, which he does, and that will be the D A A, discussion of D A A. We will have a need to come up into a formal session, and then there may not be votes, like we will be able.
And you have a motion to go over to the executive session. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Devi Asim?
Yes.
Mr. Deven? Ms. Menard? Father Jay?
Yes.
Doctor Manna?
Yes.